Good evening, everyone. This is the planning board meeting on February 21st at 7:00 PM. All rise and fight. Salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. To Stephanie for the open public meeting statement, please.
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the open public meeting act in the annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township website and a notice of the meeting was sent to Sentinel and a copy was posted at Franklin House in Mrs. Hill building.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Clark. Mr. Constantine. Mr. Doyle.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Malley.
Here.
Mr. Hanson. Mr. Kabut. Mr. Sweet.
Here.
Mr. Travolun.
Here.
Chairman Pash.
Here. And we do have a quorum. We don't have any votes to seek, so we'll move on to resolutions. The first resolution is the resolution number for this one. Michael?
Any other resolution recommending the area needed to redevelop? It was the first one.
Yes. Is there a resolution number for that?
I did not put a resolution number in that.
Okay. For the record, you think we should? We didn't have a resolu-
I would call PB redevelopment Route 40, uh, 7th Route 50.
Okay. All right. This time I entertain a motion to approve resolution for the redevelopment plan. Motion to approve. I have a motion. Second, move and second it. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Mr. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Travolun.
Yes.
Chairman Pash.
Yes. Motion carries. Second one is PB 2209 for Asbury Reconstruction. There's our motion to approve the resolution.
Make a motion.
Our motion second.
This one, okay, Clark. Yeah, that's all of your construction.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Well, I'm just gonna use the numbers. All right. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Mr. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Travolun.
Yes.
Chairman Pash.
Yes. And the next resolution is PB 2213. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve PB 2213. Eyes then.
Stand. Move and second it. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle. Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Travolun.
Yes.
Chairman Pash.
Yes. And the last resolution is PB 2214, site civil engineering. Motion to approve.
So move.
Yes. Move and second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Malley. Mr. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Travolun.
Yes.
Chairman Pash.
Yes. Okay. There's two sets of minutes. Motion to approve the December 20th meeting minutes.
Motion to approve December 20 minutes.
Second.
Second.
Move and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The second set of minutes is the January 17th minutes. Motion to approve.
Make a motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
Move and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. And next order of business is the public portion. Motion, motion to open public portion?
Motion.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in public portion. If anyone wants to come up to speak.
Good evening, Barbara Halpern Harding Highway. Well, it is a disappointment that you approved two out of the three sections of the redevelopment zone. And I don't know if you're aware of it, but currently there's various townships, a huge number of them, that are trying to put warehousing in and are voting on it as we speak on other towns. One town, Paws Grove Township, is extremely close to us. Their warehouse is gonna be at the 55 exit and Gershall Road, which is right in Vineland and it's very close to us. It's gonna be a million square feet of warehousing. So if we add to this warehousing, we're not gonna be able to have our freedom of travel anymore because Auburn is looking at 2 million square feet and that's the tip of the iceberg. These are just the ones I'm finding out on Facebook. There's many, many more. We're under siege by a huge amount of warehousing coming to South Jersey that's going to turn us into North Jersey on steroids because it won't just be a lot of cars like you might encounter on your commute to Philly, but it's going to be a lot of trucks, which makes it even harder. And we're gonna see gridlock, going to the shore, forget it. You know, people are gonna start using the alternate routes, which then are gonna clog up as well, like Route 40 and other back roads. And going to work is going to be hell for people who have to go either north or south because we're just gonna become not the Garden State. All our farms and forests are gonna be sacrificed, as well as our ample and clean water supply is going to disappear, just when we need the farms, forests, and water supplies the most. Because the reality is, is that our way of doing things where we're farming way out in California, where now there's not enough water due to climate change and droughts, we're gonna need our resources here. Our future is that if we save our resources, our water, our farmlands, our forests, we as a township are lucky enough to have enough of those things to support our own residents. And if we have to look for outside sources of food and water, it's gonna be a big problem in the future. And that future is coming fast. You seen what happened with COVID? It's the tip of the iceberg. I hate to be doomsday sayer, but it is reality. Climate change, the only way we're going to survive it is if we can handle things here on our own acreage and take care of our own people. And if you put warehouses and develop all our farmland, we won't have that. You can't eat goods that are in the warehouse. You can't live on ratables. You need our soil, you need our forest, you need it all. And we need to appropriately cite things, not put them on our forests and our farms. We need to redo our brownfields. We need to look at our corridor and see how we can clean it up instead of taking virgin pieces of land and destroying our future. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Chris Sayers, 184 Malaga Lake Boulevard. I see that there's no timer today. Does that mean I get to speak for as long as I want, or?
No. You've already wasted seven seconds.
How do I know?
I'm keeping the time right here in front and I'll be glad to share it with you when we approach the five minute mark.
Thank you. Recently, I-
All right, hold on a second.
We're giving another twenty.
Okay. I appreciate it.
I'm gonna start all over again because I, you know, I'm not charging you for this room either.
Can you, I was about to say, can you beep when it's like 30 seconds?
Yep. I can do that.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you so much for having me up here to speak. So I rented a room this past week, last Thursday, and it had, and I held a meeting of just concerned citizens who were concerned about the redevelopment zone. And I just wanted to get everybody's, you know, knowledge of it and their opinions of it. I was charged, what I thought was an inappropriate amount of money for a community group, but I was told by the town administrator that that's just what's charged for, for nonofficial nonprofit community groups. Anyway, I was told at the meeting, the previous township committee meeting, that I would be getting my payment for the facilities back. And I was told by Mr. Finley to pick up my voided check Tuesday this morning. So I picked up the voided check and he told me that the fees actually weren't waived, they were paid for me. Mayor Bruno and Mayor Doyle, do you know who paid for those fees?
Yes, I do. I may have. I'm not gonna tell you.
Well, Mr. Finley told me that it was Mayor Bruno and Mayor Doyle, so I appreciate that.
I'm there.
I'm sorry. Not yet. I'm sorry. I don't mean to jump over you. I appreciate that. Thank you. I wish you guys could have been there. I mean, it was, it was great to have people there. I know with sunshine laws, you can't all be there or there'll be a quorum. But, um, so I just wanted to ask, um, let's see. Did you or Mr., did Mayor Bruno or Mr. Doyle, or any of you, I guess, did you or anyone that you know of watch a video of our meeting?
Was cameras in there, but no.
No. And you don't know of anybody who-
I don't know of anybody.
Who watched the video? Okay.
I wasn't, I guess, the meeting was Thursday, I wasn't down.
Okay. All right. Did you talk to people about what was said at our meeting, about other people who came to the meeting?
Did I talk to people?
About what was said during the meeting?
I don't know.
So you didn't talk to people about the meeting? Okay.
I mean, I heard that it was positive. You guys had done some coffee, I saw on Facebook, they looked delicious.
They were? They were, too bad.
Sayers, if I was present at-
Yes. Yes.
It was my 50th anniversary, I choose to do something different. Two more times, ten more times, you guys are doing it.
Just shop rate.
But Chris, and I'll tell you, I'm gonna stop the timer for a second. I am familiar when they change the ordinance or resolution, when you change the ordinance. And I did watch the township committee meeting and, you know, I'm disturbed by some of the comments, but what no one that evening said, and I will put it out there, whenever there was a lot of cleanup and overtime that was incurred by the people using the room. So that charge, and it's a scale charge, that's what that charge is about. It's about the paying an employee, township employee to be there and cleaning up the room afterwards. So it's not a charge, just charge you because your name's Chris. There's a reason behind that charge, which is the cleanup and the overtime cost to having an employee there. And that wasn't said at the township committee meeting, which I did watch.
Yeah.
But I feel that needs to be out there because the perception was that, or someone could perceive that the township's just charging residents to use the room, but there's a purpose behind that. And, you know, whether the scale's right or wrong, I'm not there, but there's a reason for, I'm sure they came up with that number somehow, but there's a reasoning behind that. And I'll put you back on it.
No, I understand that. And I, I only requested to be charged as any other social group or club that can meet there, which I believe it's a $25 cleaning fee and-
Whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah. But I wasn't. That's the thing. I was charged $60 an hour, a $50 cleaning fee, and, I'm sorry, a $50 worker's fee for somebody who had to be there, and a $25 cleaning fee, which came to $195.
Well, can you say you're a nonprofit, leave us for your application?
I didn't, we're not a, I mean, we're, we're just organizing, so we didn't-
If you walk in and say you're a nonprofit, why are they gonna give you the fees for a nonprofit?
Yeah.
Nobody, nobody paid for you to use the building.
Yes.
It's your building, it's not our building, it's the resident's.
I'm, I'm up here talking about, if I could, I'm up here talking about if, not just our organization, but any other organization. I mean, I've heard from other organizations that aren't officially nonprofits who apparently use the facilities and they don't have to pay the exorbitant fees. So I just want some clarity, some transparency. And since I'm bringing up transparency, gentlemen, okay. Since the last planning board meeting, how much more time do I have, Mr. Pash?
You're three minutes and 46 seconds.
Thank you for pausing the time. I appreciate it. At the first planning board meeting, when eat, when, oh, I can't remember, what's the name of the company that, that created the redevelopment? CME, thank you. CME, and the initial planning board, when CME came up here and gave their nice presentation about why this should be a redevelopment zone, resident after resident came up and asked you gentlemen at the board, where did this idea come from? You know, was there a developer involved who floated this idea? And I have the receipts. Let's see here. "Mr. Pash, Chairman of the Board, none of us have met with anybody to have anything to do with the redevelopment or an application."
All right, I'm gonna stop you right there, Chris. This has been bothering me and quite honestly, I don't like being called a liar. And that's what's out there. Kevin Colton stood up there and asked the question, this redevelopment plan that we were talking about in December have anything to do with someone who is going to, who had requested? The one piece that the people, the people out there who may have other agendas-
I have no agenda, sir. I'm a Republican, just like you were.
And the primaries coming up, so we'll see, we'll see how that plays out.
I shouldn't have to run for a primary. I should expect you guys to do your jobs with transparency and trust and integrity for the community.
This is my statement because you made the-
Sir, this is my time!
Well, I stopped the clock. So, and what I'm doing is I'm responding to you, to your question. You asked me a question about it and I'm gonna, and I have a right to respond to you rather than not. So, let's go back to that meeting that you're referring to. There was, there was a person who had a option on the property. The property, the property in question was on, on the market for $2 million. That property got into a bidding war and went up to $9 million. The gentleman showed up and there was discussion about that. What neglected when Kevin asked me about this redevelopment plan, that individual backed out. He lost $80,000 and he walked away from the deal and he wasn't out there any longer. So, in the answer to Kevin's question, was this redevelopment plan have anything to do with a person who was coming up and wanted it? The answer was no. It wasn't. Now, when I go to an EDC meeting, when I go to EDC meetings, there's people who come in and wanna put junk yards in the township. The answer is no. It's not the proper, they wanna put solar in residential area. It's not, it's, uh, solar farms in residential area. It's not it. The individual came up, asked, we only have two things, tax abatement and redevelopment to offer people as an incentive to bring residents into town. That individual, and at that meeting you referred to, walked away from the deal, lost $80,000, and is no longer out there looking to buy or develop that property. Now, the piece about the sewer, what neglect, the sewer has to be, would have to be an onsite facility. Gloucester County Utility Authority, who has the sewer plan, who has the sewer facility and the facility number one, stopped Monroe and Clayton, Monroe and Clayton line. They can't expand that line. That line will never expand into Franklin Township. If you, if you were, what it does, what there is out there is the DuPont plan, which is they call Phase Two. They want to, at some time, there was discussion about extending that sewer line from DuPont through South Harrison, then through Elk, and then into Franklin. It never materialized, the pipe never started. So there is no sewer capacity for bringing sewer into Franklin Township, sir.
In the fair share housing settlement, did the board agree that the township committee, in the settlement, that the township committee agreed that they would facilitate in the construction of new water and sewer infrastructure?
When it became available, which is the DuPont-
And are they required to do everything in their capacity to see that it is made available so they can meet their quota?
Correct. When it becomes available, which is the Phase Two DuPont, that hasn't left the DuPont facility to go through South Harrison and Elk Township and into Franklin. It has, to facilitate when it's available and having it available are two completely different things. Your back on the clock.
Thank you. Mayor Bruno, at the meeting, was asked, "Hey, Joe, Chairman Pash in the audience, did we have a meeting about this redevelopment?" Mayor Pash thought about it for about a second. Nope. Mayor Bruno, nope, we didn't meet with anybody about the redevelopment. Well, gentlemen, the EDC minutes clearly show that representatives met with the EDC back in May about this, a specific plot of land where this redevelopment is to be based.
The one time I was asked a question was by Kevin, was by Kevin Colton, and the question was, yeah, the question was, was-
No, that's a lie. Because I came up here and asked you and Mr. Constantine if you had met with anybody separately. Because I said for transparency sake, I had asked you and Mr., and Mr. Constantine, because Mr. Constantine had whispered to you, "Oh, I met with somebody," like nobody else could hear him. And then I asked you two specifically, and then you bloviated for about two minutes and said, "Oh, oh, yeah, no, we meet with people all the time, we meet with people about-
That's correct.
-about junk yards and stuff." But you never answered the question and I could see why, because you lied about it.
Chris?
This, this, no, all right, listen, listen. This comes from the New Jersey League of Municipalities, and I'm sorry I am fired up, but I do not like being lied to and I think the residents of this township are being taken advantage of. The New Jersey League of Municipalities says government is a trust and the officers of the government are trustees and both the trust and the trustees are created for the benefit of the people. Ethical conduct is more than merely meeting the standards required by law. Ethical conduct means doing the right thing simply because it is the right thing to do. Gentlemen, I would say, and I think most people who are watching could, would say that you've lied about this throughout this entire process. How could we ever trust you to make monumental changes to our township and protect the quality of life for the residents here? I certainly don't have faith in you gentlemen at all. And it's an embarrassment.
Good off with your primary. Your time's up. No, no, not yet. Come on.
Margaret Dar.
Good evening.
Forest Grove.
I'm sorry, speak up, I can't hear you.
Forest Grove.
I'll see you at the Republican meeting Thursday, Mr. Pash.
Okay.
Hopefully you'll be there.
Thanks for the invite.
Yeah. I'm a Republican, I'll be there.
Good.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes, ma'am.
You spoke to me after the last TC meeting?
Yes.
And you told me that you were going to vote according, exactly according to what Joe Arsenal said that the whole lot was developable?
I, I referenced what Mr. Arsenal told us at night. That's correct.
Well, I looked at the tape.
Okay. I'll go down and ask me my neighbor.
Thank you. Because you're really wrong. As, he called them Porch Town Site, which is Section 1, and he said it is not developable. And Willow Grove, he called, which was number 2, he said there's no access, there's no room for signage, there's no frontage, it's not developable. The only thing that is developable is FAS land. And he said that is only 50%, 45 to 50%, 58%, I'm sorry, 58% developable. I, uh, it's on the internet, or you can go talk to your neighbor and get the facts straight. But in the meantime, are you gonna vote now about it?
Oh, why, tonight?
Yeah.
No, it's, no, it's not done here. It's not done at this level. It's not at township committee level.
So in other words, you're gonna send over what you voted on the last meeting?
Yes. Correctly.
And you can't put any amendments on that?
They amended the, the original document to remove the FAS land piece concrete.
Uh-huh. The only one that was developable, according to Joe Arsenal. So you did not listen to him at all?
That vote before, that vote was taken over now?
Mm-hmm.
Before I talked to you after the township meeting, I was done before that. Township committee hasn't done anything in the House?
Yes, I know. So I'm telling you that you spoke to me and you said that Joe Arsenal said that the whole thing was developable.
I was making a point to talk to him before we vote on that at the township meeting.
Okay. And Suzanne is also on the tape, if you would listen to her. You're the only person here who is going to vote on this. Oh, Doyle, are you on it?
I listened to the tape three times. Everybody's on it.
Okay. And what was your opinion of Suzanne's and Joe's testimony to you?
My opinion? I listened to the testimony. We have experts that we hired, I'm not gonna take.
And the expert's opinion that something needs to be developed because it hasn't been, there's been no, no construction on it for 10 years? That's your-
We don't have the rules for these office statements.
But do you agree with that testimony?
What testimony?
What the engineer said, that because it hasn't been developed in five years, in 10 years, that it's in need of development?
I don't agree with everything the engineer said. I agree with Mark. I believe that that end of town is a partial four, like, we do love that. So I think first off, we look at, I think, I am looking at a good job, we just love your state. We just heard an eight-minute rant about a park that everybody up here, for the most part, voted against. Very parcel that we're all upset about. Everybody else here, I think, for the most part, voted to not build. Nobody hears that.
Everybody up here voted what?
For the FAS land. It's the piece that had the, the meeting, the warehouse, the main, we voted, everybody up here voted against so far. I'm just, it's just odd to vote against something and then be berated and accused of stuff. We voted against it.
Uh-huh. And Mr. Bruno, are you going to accept what the planning board has decided that is developable one and two, but not three?
Well, based on the fact that I told you, what I thought, Mr. Arsenal, I'd said, I would check with Mr. Arsenal and then I'll make my decision based on what he says.
Based on what Joe Arsenal said?
That'll be part of my decision making, Mrs. Arsenal, absolutely. I don't think anybody on township committee has made their mind up, I know I haven't, the whole point of this, but excepting them on, is to talk to professionals, talk to residents, and make the decision. I don't think anybody came here to go lying to you. I don't either. I'm only speaking for myself.
Well, how about you, Mr. Travolun?
Oh, I'll-
How do you feel about your-
What the planning board's position was, contrary to what Barbara Halpern said this evening. This board was taxed with a job to make a recommendation to the township committee, and we did that. We did not decide for the residents. The governing body will decide at some point in the near future on this topic. What this board did was we split it into three different sections for three different votes. CME presented it to us as one wholesale piece. This Mr. Doyle made the recommendation and the motion at the January meeting, divided into three parcels to make us understand it. Some of us felt stronger in certain sections, so we decided to split it to make it easier. As Mr. Doyle just said, Section 3, the FAS land portion, was not recommended by this board. That means we're telling the township, we do not think it's an area in need of development. However, the governing body can overrule what the planning board suggested. They can either agree or disagree. We decided to pull the FAS land piece out, I know myself, because when I seconded the motion, I stated why. I said because I thought within the last 10 years, there was development on the property when the trees were removed and therefore it wasn't under the guidelines of untouched in 10 years. in 10 years. My own opinion, I'm not an attorney, I seconded the motion. The board voted that evening and agreed, I don't remember the vote, it might have been 7 to 2, 7 to 2, to throw out Section 3. Another reason why I said it, but I didn't want to have it in the resolution or in the minutes, is because I listened to the public. Most of the public that was present then, as well as this evening, live or lives near Oak Avenue, which is across from the Fasland portion. So the closest residents to the community, not the people in Piney Hall, not the people in Janvier, but the people in Malia on Oak Avenue, were against it. I indeed listened to them. In fact, as a board, we listened to them because the results were 7 to 2 to yank that piece out. So we did listen to the people. If you think you're speaking upon deaf ears, I can tell you, you are not. Some of us up here, or all of us, are indeed listening to the people, to the voters, to the taxpayers, and to the residents. Now, as far as Section 1 and Section 2, I heard what Mr. Arsenal said, and he said the majority of Section 1 is wetlands or wetland buffers. I voted yes to that section because I honestly believe that this township committee will not decide if anything's going to get built there. It'll be required by the DOT because somehow we put in a resolution that you couldn't egress onto Lettercake Road or Porch Town Road. That meant that Section 1 had to egress onto Route 40, which means we'd have to go to the state, whoever the developer is, should there be a developer, would have to go to New Jersey State DOT for approvals. My opinion, it's too close to the interchange. My opinion, it would never be granted. My opinion, the parcel will never be built. Number 2, same parcel, same wetlands, same wetland buffers. My opinion, it's too wet, we have the 300-foot buffers, that very little of the property will be deemed able to be built. So with the DOT and the DEP, my opinion, again, it will not be built. My opinion.
Why did you vote for it?
Because I put the heat on the DOT and the DEP instead of this board. Why should, why should we use the township to be the bad guy when the real bad guy, I honestly believe, in reference to development, will be the DOT or the DEP?
What about the people that you're, that you're affecting with this? What about the people in the Malaga Lake area?
Well, we addressed it by looking at parcel Number 3.
That's a conversation for another night. You're taking the assumption that there's an application. There is no application. It is whether or not that area qualifies for. There will be, there will be, could be, maybe a day when there's an application. At that particular time, that's when traffic buffers and everything else gets addressed. If you remember the application from Atlantic City Electric for, over a proposed avenue, and the amount of time we spent to get it right. You're taking two, some people are taking two totally separate items and creating one. There's no application. There's one to the planning board, I mean, there's one from the planning board who was tasked a job to the township committee to identify an area for redevelopment. If there's a plan, then there will be meetings about the plan, the drawings, the buffers, the access, the sewer, and all that. None of that exists because there is no application or there is no plan at this point in time.
But you're trying to make it, label it redevelopment, which will give taxes...
And you know what, the other piece of it, because this is, this has divided this town quite a bit. And myself, I don't want to be up there like other speakers that go to township committee meeting and list all the things that they've done in their life, but I've spent probably about, I was thinking about today, 54 years of doing something in this town. Whether it was on the fire side, the government side, the economical, the planning, whatever the case may be, I've spent 54 years of my life doing stuff in this township. And one of the things that I've always bothered me is the assumption from the 16,000 people out there that the township prevented Fazio from building and developing out there. So I, I have every desire to get this right. We had, we had one task to do, and we did that task. But to tie that to warehousing or anything else at this point, because I, when there is no plan, you can't sit there and say it's going to be warehousing, or it's going to be whatever, when there is no application. So that's a, that's a discussion for another night, and I'm sure it'll take several nights, just like everything else that was a major piece out there. But for us to say absolutely no, we're not interested, we're putting ourselves right back into the 16 years of me here, listening to the majority of those people in this town, thinking that the township prevented Fazio from building, and it wasn't. It was a small group of people. And in the end, the credit to the solicitor, who was sitting here tonight and was sitting there 16 years ago, Fazio was able to build it, he just walked away from it out of disgust. So your time's up. Is there anyone else which should come up this evening?
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Dave Marshall, 67 New Road.
Good evening, Dave.
I've, I've done enough of berating on people, I'm going to try to stay away from that if I can this evening.
Me too.
Well, good, because you and I are not going to butt heads tonight because it won't be pretty for you.
Not, or you. Or you.
Just a couple of things. It's been brought up about the misinformation and the lies. It's, a lot of it is obvious, it's out there, we're trying to get past that, as you saw from the last committee meeting, you said you watched it. It's time for that to end. We got to get to the point where we're open with each other.
Agreed.
Everything that happens up there, there can't be any backdoor meetings, anything closed, the public needs to be informed of all of it. If you want our support on things, you've got to work with us. You've got to be a team with us. That's just the reality of it. This township hasn't done that very well for years. I'm hoping this can be the point we start doing that, each board, not just the committee, but the planning board, all of us. We need that to happen. I do have a couple of points that I want to go over. One is the bootleg that was referred to on the, on the one piece of property on Section 3, dog leg, excuse me, excuse me. I like animals more than I do boots, so I try to get away from that. That was brought up, that it was, you know, some tax errors, and I know that's the one investigation, but I found three different spots, 2014, 2016, and 2017, where a refund was given to Victor Room on that exact block, plot and lot number. Yeah, because he overpaid taxes on that exact piece of property. I'm just asking how that happened if it never existed. I'm just, I don't know, that's why I'm asking. I'm curious, I couldn't find the reason how it can exist in one aspect, but it did in the other.
Do you look at any of these old properties? I've bought some properties that were like 100-year-old properties. I have one farm that was 40 acres from this.
Oh, I understand how things can get redrawn and all that, I do. But, but this is recent, and this is all in relationship to what's going on, so that's why I'm asking. Now, I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on the spot because I...
I don't do taxes.
I know, I know. But I just find it odd that a piece of property that was, you know, a error on a map, could have money refunded to somebody that owns property all around it. It just seems kind of ironic.
Dave, I have no idea, it's, that whole thing was, I think the only thing that everybody agreed, agreed with up here is that there was something wrong, and let's fix the problem because the two residents there did not need to be affected by a mistake that was made years, whatever, whatever year you want to pick, going all the way back, you know, we had, this whole redevelopment plan identified a problem, and it's, you know, it has been and is being addressed, but I don't think anybody has the answers. You know, it goes back, predates everybody up here, so. If you have the lot block...
Yeah.
Maybe we can have the tax code reset.
Yeah, it's Block 4301, Lot 11.
The county assessor already confirmed that the lot does not exist.
Right. Yeah, the taking out of it because of the, I mean, that was a good idea because of the people being affected. I'm not against that, I'm just wondering how money was refunded on something that shouldn't have existed. I mean, obviously there had to be somebody handing out a check for this, somehow. Uh, yeah, I've got copies, I'll give it to you after we're done.
Thank you.
You know, and you can find it on the tax records, and you pull it up, you can see exactly when it was handed back. But like I said, it just seems kind of odd. You know, and that's, that's one of the reasons why we get so fired up, is there's these gray areas that don't make sense, that are public, you know, these are informations available to the public, and how does it happen, and how does nobody but us catch it? You know, I don't, I don't mean that sarcastically either, it just seems ironic that there's paid people that aren't finding these problems. Why do we have to find them? I just, again, these are points to ponder.
I can't disagree with you.
I know, I...
I was, uh, it's, yeah.
Well, that's the main part of it, right, but there, I know, because we don't have an actual tax assessor, we share, which is another issue, that's a different meeting. But just, again, just curious. I talked before, as the last committee meeting, that I believe a lot in the oath of office, and I think that, again, if we can get past, hopefully this, and get on track with each other, that we'll have that transparency, and everybody will start to earn some trust because we need it. We can't all keep coming up here and fighting over this stuff. It's, it's a waste of energy and time for all of us. We all have lives we like to live, and none of you up there like being yelled at, I'm sure. I mean, as much as people like to debate, yelling isn't, isn't an enjoyable part of that. So we've got to find a way past it. I'm going to end it with a quote, a quote from, uh, that I'd rather fail with honor than succeed by fraud. Just one of the things that, you know, it's just always stuck with me, these little quotes here and there, and they just, a lot of them are easier to remember than a chapter in book that we're taught in school, but the little ones can stick with you a long time. So thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Aaron Dunn, sing, oh.
Hello. Maggie McCool, on Orowell Grove Road. I, of course, echo many of the sentiments heard here, but a couple of things...
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, your name was Maggie?
Yeah.
And, could you speak closer to my...
Oh, sorry.
At least I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Maggie McCool, Orowell Grove Road. Echo many sentiments heard here, but a couple of things. Someone recently researched or published these tax rates that I don't really fully understand, but I will say, one of the things I understand about Upper Pitts Grove, where the other part of my land is, is that they're in the black, whereas most townships are not, and they don't approve much development. So, I mean, it's a matter of priorities, just to put that into the talking points. And of course, I also wanted to talk about the fact that I can't control, none of us here can control what it means, this whole, you know, if it hasn't been touched in 10 years, then it should be looked at for redevelopment. But I would ask everyone to just step back and sort of think about this in terms of, I have land that hasn't been touched in way more than 10 years, but there's value in that. There's value in the wildlife, farms that do farm on a regular basis let fields go fallow. That land has been untouched is actually good. We need older, we need a little bit, slightly older growth. None of the growth in this region is really that old in terms of forests or fallen forests, where, you know, I know people don't like beavers, but where they fell trees and the water comes in and kills the trees, that becomes grassland, and that's very important. And all of that root structure gives density to soil that otherwise would be too wet for certain things, whether it's wildlife or humans to use. So there's value in land being untouched. And I just, I know it's kind of irrelevant for your purposes, but I would ask that folks try to think about it that way once in a while. When, you know, people pass through this community on Route 55, they look out, no kidding, they say, "Look at all those beautiful woods," right? That's what we want. We want to have that density in between Route 55 and our homes, and we want people to ride through and think, "Isn't that nice? It's so beautiful, look at all that dense growth." I just want to say those things. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Aaron Dunn, sing, none.
Motion to close public portion.
Move, move the second of favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. Let's move on to the reports, communications, and presentations. I'm getting, I'm reading, I'm reading the line right above it, reports. All right, the, there's an ordinance, the Stormwater Management Control Plan, which is ordinance 5-23, we're asked to review it by the township committee. Who wants to take the lead in explaining this, Rowell, or Ed?
Probably, yeah. Well, I can start, because I...
All right, why don't you start? Give us a, give us the overview and...
Yes, I didn't have any comments because it's a stormwater management relating to the pine lands, which frankly, we're required to implement because we're part of the pine lands. And that's the short, the short version. I did read CME's letter, I'm in agreement with their recommendation that it is consistent with the master plan, and it should be adopted. You essentially have to adopt it.
Yeah, it's only affecting the pine lands area. Correct.
Now, Ed did it more detail here.
Yeah, I mean, just to add to that, the main changes are they're becoming a little bit more strict regarding recharge on properties. One of the big elements, if they added a recharge requirement for minor development in addition to what major development already requires, instead of having a two-year recharge requirement, you'd have a 10-year recharge requirement. So they're making it more protective of the pine lands areas specifically.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for the engineer? Okay.
Will those requirements that are in the pine lands, will we as a township have to unilaterally agree to them in the non-pine lands portions?
No. So your township broken up into the pine lands and non-pine lands. So the way that it's set up, and one of the recommendations within our letter, to keep consistency throughout the township, is one of the requirements with this change would be a submission to the township and review for stormwater management components. Now, currently, that is being done throughout the township, and Rosemary's done a good job with that. Now, the difference would be is if you come in for residential development within a non-pine lands area versus a pine lands area, you're going to have a different standard that you need to adhere to from a recharge requirement when it comes to a single family as well.
So, let me ask you this. I know that one of the boundaries is, is mainly for a long stretch of the pine lands to the east and the rest of the township to the west. So if you were to want to build some sort of development to the west of that line, would it affect, I mean, because you're, you know, you're just talking about streets, so would it affect how water discharges in the pine lands?
You're saying build it on the non-pine...
On the west side, which is the non-pine side, but it would have an effect in the east side?
You would not have to submit an application to the pine lands, if that's your question? I've, I've seen a few of those in municipalities that technically speaking, you don't need to submit to pine lands, whether or not you're potentially... Now, because you could be, if you're talking downstream, I can't speak to that. You would have to, you know, speak to them if you're ultimately discharging them to the pine lands, then yes, I would imagine you would have to comply with their requirements. But, you know, using the example we used before, if you're on the west side of the road, non-pine lands versus on the east side of the road, in pine lands, you'd have two different requirements, whether you're building a single family as well, on just a regular lot that's available in town. So that's, that's ultimately from a, you know, grand scheme of things the difference. So there's a whole nother set of requirements when it's a major development, basically anything greater than five units and/or, you know, commercial development that you're going to receive, you know, one acre of service. And then there's a couple other, you know, factors that go into it.
And in English?
Yep.
Is this a grading plan?
Yes, it's essentially what it is. So you're going to, you're going to have a grading, a grading plan reviewed by the...
So grading plan would be mandatory in the pine lands, but not in non-pine lands currently?
Technically speaking, there is a section within the ordinance that's been implemented previously to have a grading plan submitted for all development, but in order to keep consistent the requirements, I'm going to allow Rosemary to speak to that more. One of the consistency issues would be is you have more strings of requirements and more items required as part of the pine lands ordinance versus if you're not a non-pine lands property.
Therefore, you're saying the grading plan is still required in a minor subdivision, non-pine lands parcels. Effective what date?
Do you want to chime in on that? I know there's a recommendation to modify the grading plan, a grading ordinance to have consistency.
So it's always been in the, the stormwater management ordinance? It's just that we only require it for new homes, not rebuild new homes, if there were, like, you know, if there was home there and it was destroyed, they are waived, that grading plan would be waived. But for any brand-new homes on lots?
What about an addition on an existing lot? Would a grading plan be required?
No, absolutely not, no. Unless, unless it went through a zoning board application or planning board application, and you guys decide that it would be an addition.
Attached that evening?
Yeah.
Makes sense. All right, anybody else have questions on this?
So are we to make a recommendation to the township governing, governing body to recommend O5-23?
That's correct.
At this time, I make that motion.
Hey, what's your, just to clarify, and it's, and it's ladder, talks about it being consistent with the master plan, so you're, it's referred to, you see, you make a determination as to whether it is or is not consistent with your master plan.
So Michael, is it consistent with our master plan?
This face is pretty, pretty straightforward that it is.
It makes all of Chris review it.
Now, do you want to include the second recommendation that Ed talked about as far as updating the checklist to be consistent outside of the pine lands, or you want to just leave that alone?
I'd rather not touch it personally. I don't know about the rest of the board.
Anybody else have an opinion? I would want to be real. Okay. All right, well, with two committee people here hearing the discussion, I'm sure they can address it, let's address what we need to with the pine land piece of it, and inserting that, moving that piece forward. Was that a motion here, now?
That was a motion.
All right.
Second round.
I have a motion in the second to forward to the township committee, the ordinance, O5-23 on stormwater control, updating the master plan with the state new requirements. We'll call, vote please.
Mayor Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Travolone?
Yes.
Chairman Pash?
Yes. Okay, back to you, Steph, for, Elaine, use monthly report, please. Okay.
So the escrow payments for the month for the engineer, they totaled 1,000... So, the escrow payments for the month for the engineer, they totaled $1,052.75, and the ones for the attorney totaled $1,538.
Okay.
And we have the RLS county approval as well. And in addition, in your packet tonight, you'll have my end-of-the-year report, and just a couple things that I noticed, you know, with the applications. You had 14 planning board applications, and three of them were on adjustments, and four were site plan waivers. I think the board should take a look at, and see if there's something we could do in the fee structure for lot line adjustments, because there's really no development on those. And they're kind of like, the review will know, but it's almost, escrow is being charged, it's almost like they're creating a new lot line, creating a new lot, and like a minor subdivision. Even though it is a minor subdivision per se, it's a minor subdivision with a lot line adjustment, has no new development. So, I think the escrow charges that are coming in are kind of high, and it's something I think you guys should look at, because we want to encourage people to do the right thing. As far as site plan waivers, you had four of those, and, you know, I think the ordinance should be cleared up as far as the language of what is considered site plan waiver, but boards have granted a lot of site plan waivers that had development, extensive development over the years, which have, they've really been part of our recent court cases, and they've been a real issue. Site plan waivers should be when there's no new development, or it's very minor in nature. So, I think it should really be cleared up anyway.
Yeah, we discussed it till last week.
I agree with that, oh, hardly, yeah.
You had 18 zoning board applications, five were use variance applications for ground mount solar panels, and expansion of non-conforming uses in pool barns. One of the things I noticed in the ordinance is that they use a definition of 1,200 square feet for garages, but a pool barn's not a garage. A garage is something, the definition is that it stores vehicles and up to three vehicles. Where pool barns are usually really farming, you know, your tractors, your yard equipment, sometimes guys do, you know, woodworking and they tinker in it, but they usually necessarily don't park their vehicles in it, garages are what they do. So, when someone has that attached garage existing, it doesn't really say, like, whether you can't have a detached garage of the 1,200 square feet. So, I think the ordinance should be cleared up, the definition should be cleared up, it should say, what is a pool barn, what is the maximum square footage you can have, what's a side yard requirement, what's the rear yard requirement, it shouldn't be the same as a house. And what is a garage, what is the total maximum size you're allowed to have, is it detached, is it attached, you know, do you minus the total square footage if you have an attached garage existing, is that prohibiting you from having a detached garage of the 1,200 square feet? And then the side yard and a rear yard requirement should be, you know, set, so it makes it a little bit more clear.
Clear, yeah. Agreed.
The ground mount solar panels, one of the things that I think was recommended, when we looked at the solar ordinance before, is that saying about the three acres, you know, where a lot of our properties are one acres, one and a half acres, you know, something maybe to take a look at down the line, you know, to see if in certain zones, if that requirement should be reduced as far as the acreage. Should it go by the acreage that you can build a house on, because a solar, ground mount solar system is an accessory used to a single-family dwelling, so it shouldn't be more stringent than if you were building a home. So, it's just something for you to take a look at down the line, just a suggestion. And then, of course, the total revenue that we collected for the construction permits this year was $291,577. The total court case fines that I had taken into court were $22,854. The rental COTs were $2,300, which I think something should be looked at down the line. The rental units in the township, to see if, you know, we can get a, well, I won't be here, but to see if you guys can get a rental program in place, I think that is very important for the town, for the safety. Resales were $22,650, and between land use applications, zoning, COA, and escrow collected for the year, it was $1,666.247.77, which was a total of $505,627.77. So, I think that the department overall did really well. I'd like to thank my staff and the boards, you know, for all the hard work this year.
So, some of these recommendations that you just made concerning the ordinances and some guidelines, how do we get...
Yes, should I have a review?
Yeah, well, your engineer, your planner.
So, what, and the timeline for that?
We're coming up on it now, right?
Yeah, we should have a subcommittee of some sort at some point.
Coming up with the outline, what does that mean, the sharing calendar?
Yeah.
Why don't we do that, Michael? Why don't we form a...
Maybe you should, you know, you have several board members missing, but yeah, come up with a subcommittee to start that process.
Right. Why don't we do that next meeting? Send out an email to the rest of the board members, requesting interest from individual members who want to serve on the subcommittee, with the master plan review.
Okay.
And let's get that started, because before we know it, it's gonna be off on us.
Rosemary, you can put my name down now. Rosemary, put my name down.
Okay. All right, I need a motion, because I have deals of dollars and cents to accept a secretary's report or the annual report. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bruno.
Is that you?
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Pally.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Travelin.
Yes.
Chairman Tep.
Yes. Okay. Next one is the environmental report. I'm looking through here, is there?
Yeah, so, it'll look just like this, yeah.
Okay. All right. There we go. Roe, could you touch on the highlights on this, please?
I don't really know much about it. I think that Mr. Stipick had sent it over to us, the review. Jason?
Will you be there?
When it goes through the report, the environmental report, the annual?
The planning board does have a representative from the Environmental Commission that serves the board, perhaps?
He's not here today, that's...
Ah, shame.
Okay. Let's, let the record show, the report has been, oh, there he is.
Oh, yeah, good evening.
Jason, how are you, sir?
Mr. Chairman. As is required by the statute, the Environmental Commission has put together their 2022 annual report for the year. Obviously, you have it here, and keep reviewing it, I don't know if you have any specific questions regarding the report, kind of outlines some of our activities for the year, some of the projects that we've been looking at and working on, mainly the Malga Lake Park parcel, as well as the Ponte Hala preservation project that we, you know, we talk about practically at every meeting. And then also, you know, our, some of our outreach programs that are, involve a community day and other things of the sort. Mr. Stipick is the one that put the report together, so if you have any specific questions, I can certainly forward them to Mr. Stipick, if there's anything I can answer, I'm happy to do so, now.
Jason, in the report, it talks about the Ponte Hala preserve area, we're awaiting pine lands approval. Do you know how long it's been since we've been, how long have we applied for pine lands approvals?
Well, I know that this project's been going back and forth for quite some time with different grant applications.
I can respond to that. We have pine lands comments a few months ago, we resubmitted about a month, month and a half, and we've still not heard anything back from them, so we'll follow up this week and see.
So, basically, they're holding up this township awaiting funds?
The township has been able to go out and bid on the projects, that's definitely where we're waiting.
You're very familiar with the pine lands, I assume, Mr. Travelin?
Personally, I haven't, I had an application with the pine lands for a lot line adjustment, and I waited 19 months.
So, they're treating the township essentially the same way they treated you?
Yeah, not very audaciously.
All right. Are there any other questions?
And I realize it may not be their expertise, but the solar piece and the battery-operated car piece, speaking from the fire service side of it, looking at the DSW fire, that final report's not out yet, but more than likely, it was solar panels, if it wasn't solar panels, the solar panels caused, contributed to loss of that building. And Franklin here, we had a house roof, solar panels, set the house on fire. The battery-operated vehicles, with the rekindle of the batteries, we're looking at jobs that are taking eight hours, that keep rekindling, and several thousands and thousands of gallons of water to cool. So, if there's any information coming back, it's really becoming, from the fire service side, the environmental, they're trying to do good environmentally, or has side effects, both fires with solar panels and the difficulties it's causing, and the battery-operated vehicles. So, if the Environmental Commission has information, could they forward that back through the fire, give it to me, or get it to the fire service, because we are having a big-time problem with these, those items that are crewed, as you mentioned?
Sure. Right now, we're currently working on the whale situation.
That was my next call.
As soon as we get that under control, we'll forward anything we have on fire department stuff to you.
I had that one in my pocket. Why are you guys killing all the whales?
We're looking into it, so, but yeah, I'll double check, I'll report back to the Environmental Commission, see if anyone has any information on it.
They have information, you know, and there's quite a bit of information out there, but if they have any input, seriously, be interested in...
Yeah, absolutely, I'll report back, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else have questions on that? All right, then let the record show that the annual report was received. Michael, no need for a closed session, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and at this time, does any board members have anything else to bring up this evening before we adjourn?
No, I just would like to say to Rosemary, thank you for your time, and I wish you best of luck.
Thank you.
I'll second that, thank you. I've been doing this, it was a pleasure, and it's become my bad luck for any reason.
Roe, they took the air right out of my balloon. Best of luck, you were an ace to work with.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Got it.
Second, all the favor? Aye. We adjourn, thank you very much for coming on this evening.